Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Today is March 19th, 2024, and the time is 9:31. I would like to also announce Commissioner Pendiggrass is not with us today. He is at the canvassing board. And at this point, I would like to call up Pastor Matt Swearegen for Cross Point Church for the invocation. Thank you, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you so much for this invitation. Let's pray. Father God, we thank you so much for this opportunity to gather together. Lord, we pray that today you will pour out your wisdom, your guidance, as things are discussed and decisions are made. Father, we pray that you will bless everyone here, Lord, as they seek to make the lives of the people who live in Lee County better, God, to serve well. And so, Father, I pray that you will bless them for that and that you will pour out your wisdom. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. At this time, please join me in pledging.
Pledge allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every reason and justice for all.
Please be seated. All right. Okay, this morning, we have four ceremonial presentations. This morning, I would like to recognize Commissioner Sandelli for the first presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Good morning, everyone. Kim, would you please come forward into the podium, and I'll read the resolution, and we'll go from there. You know, as a veteran, I've had the honor to read a number of resolutions in support of our armed services. The following resolution, however, focuses on our commitment to Guardsmen, Reserves, and the transitioning service members, as they bring some very unique skills to our workforce. You know, I think as we can see every day in the news, these valued personnel are being called upon in a number of additional ways to serve and protect. So with the resolution, this Board of County Commissioners' resolution, whereas the Lee Board of County Commissioners recognizes the Guard and Reserves are essential to the strength of our nation and the well-being of our communities, whereas the highest American traditions, patriotic men and women of the Guard and Reserve serve voluntarily in a honorable and vital profession. They train to respond to their community and their county in the need, times of need. They deserve the support of every segment of our society. Whereas these volunteer forces continue to serve our nation, increased public understanding is required of the essential role of the Guard and Reserves in preserving our national security. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Lee County, Florida, proclaims March 19th, 2024, as Employer Support for the Guard and Reserve Day. In Lee County, as we join other employers in pledging our support and urge all employers in Lee County to join us in the support of our Guardsmen, Reservists, and transitioning service members and veterans. Duly executed this 19th day of March, 2024, Board of County Commissioners, signed by our chairman, Mike Greenwell.
All right, congratulations. Congratulations. Come on up, please. I'll give you a few words.
Okay, I'll just get this to you now. We'll take the picture, then.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Good morning. One, two, and three. And one more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kim?
Good morning. I would just like to say thank you so very much for the support for our Reservists and our National Guardsmen. It is very much appreciated. Many of them have jobs here in our county, and they depend on being able to come home and getting that job back when they get deployed. And I would also, while I'm here, I would also like to thank all the veterans that are in this room with us right now. If you could just stand for a moment so we could thank you. Thank you very much.
My pleasure. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ruhain, would you like to bring up the next ceremony?
I would love to, and if I could have the members of Lee Health come up and anyone that is associated with the Academy of Nutrition. Lee Health, can you come up too, please? Thank you. Good morning. Whereas food is the substance by which life is sustained, the type, quality, and amount of food individuals consume each day plays a vital role in the overall health. And whereas there's a need for continuing nutritional education on a wide-scale effort to enhance health eating practices, and whereas National Nutrition Month is an annual nutrition, education, and information campaign created by the Academy of Nutrition and Diabetics, whereas the campaign celebrated each year during the month of March focuses attention to the importance of making informed food choices and developing sound eating and physical habits. Whereas the overall health and well-being of the residents is paramount to the importance of Lee County and Lee Health, now therefore to resolve by the Board of County Commissioners, Lee County, Florida, proclaims the month of March National Nutrition Month. In Lee County, Florida, encourage all citizens to join the campaign and become concerned about their nutrition and nutrition of others in hoping to achieve optimal health, both for today and tomorrow. Duly executed the 19th of March, 2024, by our chairman, Mike Greenwell.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. I put you guys in the spot.
All right. And one, two, and three. And one more.
Good morning. We just wanted to say thank you so much for recognizing our profession as registered dieticians, both within our community and throughout Lee Health as well. You know, we strive to make sure that we have an essential role in, you know, prevention and management of chronic diseases in our community, whether it be in community outreach programs or acutely within the hospital itself. So again, we just really appreciate you recognizing our profession and what we do for.
Thank you for you doing.
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, Commissioner Hammond, would you like to present the next ceremony?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I feel guilty. I'll be eating a salad at lunch today now. Put my veggies in. I appreciate all you guys do. All right, I'd like to call up everybody from the Red Cross who's here for the American Red Cross Month. Dennis Sanders, if you're here as well. Bring anybody who you brought with you up too. We would love to recognize y'all. If you'll just stand at the podium, I'll read the resolution into the record, and then we'll take a photo, and Dennis, I think you'll say a few words for us. Good morning.
Morning.
All right. So the resolution reads as follows. Whereas the American Red Cross fulfills a unique and vital role in our community, providing health and hope in the face of emergencies and disaster, and is a true reflection of the humanitarian and volunteer spirit of the American people. And whereas for over 79 years, United States Presidents have called upon people to support the American Red Cross and its humanitarian mission, President Franklin D. Roosevelt was the first to proclaim March as Red Cross Month in 1943. Since that time, every president has issued proclamations designating March as Red Cross Month. And whereas the American Red Cross has been helping people for 139 years, responding to disasters and assisting members of the military, teaching lifesaving skills, and serving one of the largest, as one of the largest blood suppliers in the United States. And whereas nationally, the American Red Cross responds to an average of nearly 200 disasters every day, the organization provides around-the-clock link between those in the military and their families, and supplies blood and blood products to approximately 3,000 hospitals and transfusion centers across the country. And whereas we applaud the American Red Cross's mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies, and our community depends on the American Red Cross, which relies on volunteers and the generosity of the public to perform its mission. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Lee County, Florida, proclaims the month of March as American Red Cross Month in Lee County, and encourages all citizens to support the work of service and relief organizations that help support our community. It's duly executed this 19th day of March, 2024, by our chairman, the Honorable Mike Greenwell. Happy American Red Cross Month. Thank you.
Dennis, I'd like to present to him. Do you have a picture?
Commissioner. Thank you so much for all you guys do.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Commissioners, on behalf of the Red Cross, especially here in southwest Florida, Gulf Coast to the heartland, number one, let me just say Jill Palmer, the executive director for this region, she sends her regards. However, the Red Cross has her traveling. So as the community volunteer leader for the five counties, I'm here today, and I've been here before. So thank you very much for the resolution. Secondly, I would like to thank the individuals when they recognize the veterans. I served six years in the Air Force on active duty. I am the president for the Reserve Officers Association, number 27, for Marco Naples. So my thanks again. The Red Cross, thank you. And if there are individuals out here in the gallery that wish to give up their time and their talent, the 800 number is at your dial. And headquarters for the American Red Cross is right here in Fort Myers. Once again, I'm Dennis Sanders, community volunteer leader. Thank you very much. With me today is another volunteer with the Red Cross, and she may want to say a thank you or not.
Yeah, thank you very much for recognizing me. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, the last presentation. Commissioner Ruhain, would you like to present the last ceremony?
Gladly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members from LARQ, if you'd come on out, please. By all means, stand at the podium. I'm gladly reading this resolution. We'll take a photo, and then someone could talk about it. Resolution, whereas there are thousands of children and adults in Lee County who have intellectual and developmental disabilities, and whereas Lee Association of Remarkable Citizens, known as LARQ, has been advocating and serving individuals with intellectual and development disabilities in Lee County since March 12th, 1954, and will celebrate 70 years' service, March 12th, 2024. And whereas individuals with intellectual and development disabilities frequently require specialized services, training, and support for extending periods of their lives, and due to improved care, their lifespans often exceed that of their parents and caregivers. Whereas the support provided by family members, caregivers, friends, professionals, and concerned citizens enable individuals with intellectual and development disabilities to participate more freely in education, employment, and community living. And whereas this month, we join LARQ to recognize and support individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities, and their rights to achieve the universally desired goals of self-fulfillment, purpose engagement, and inclusion of communities so they may reach their fullest potential. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Lee County hereby proclaim March 24, 2024, as Intellectual and Development Disability Awareness Month in Lee County, and recognizes the many achievements made by these citizens and the potential to achieve and continue to grow and contribute to remarkable members of our community. Duly executed the 19th of March, 2024, by our chairman, Mike Greenwell. Thank you very much. My pleasure. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. My pleasure. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you. 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 Thank you so much. I'm Angela Katz. I'm the executive director, and really want to thank you for your support. We are very proud of the 70 years of our history here in Fort Myers and Lee County, serving our population, but we are extremely excited about the next 70. We have a growing population, so it's important that we continue to innovate and provide services to our community for this remarkable population. One of our most exciting projects we have right now is the building of a commercial culinary training kitchen on our five-acre campus in the corner, Hanson and Evans. This is a path forward into food service industry here in Lee County, actually not only serving our population, but also helping to solve a significant workforce crisis in our community. So we are very excited not only to serve, but be the happiest block. We're called the happiest block in Fort Myers, but I think it's okay if we go ahead and expand that to the happiest block in Lee County, right? So, and we invite you to come and take a tour, take a look at what we're doing, but thank you again for your support and know that you're making a difference in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the presentations for this morning. At this time, we will take up the recap. There are no items to defer and no items for revisions. So moving to the consent agenda. Commissioner Sandelli, do you have any items to pull?
No.
Commissioner Ruhain?
No, I do not.
Commissioner Hammond?
I have none.
I have none.
I'll move the balance, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion to approve from Commissioner Hammond, a second from Commissioner Ruhain. Mr. Harner, please.
Public comment.
I'm sorry. I thought you pointed to him.
I apologize.
No one knows.
Okay, so any objections?
No.
No objections. Okay. I need to have public comment, I'm sorry. Public comment. You told me I was going to forget that, didn't you, this morning, and I forgot. Any public comment on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. Okay, I close for public comment. Again, I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Hammond, a second from Commissioner Ruhain. Mr. Harner, please.
Public comment.
I'm sorry. I thought you pointed to him.
I apologize.
No one knows.
Okay, so any objections?
No.
No objections. Okay. I need to have public comment, I'm sorry. Public comment. You told me I was going to forget that, didn't you, this morning, and I forgot. Any public comment on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. Okay, I close for public comment. Again, I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Hammond, a second from Commissioner Ruhain. Any objections? No objections. Consent agenda moves four to zero. Okay, that concludes the consent agenda. We will move to the administrative agenda. Mr. County Manager, please introduce item one.
Thank you, Commissioner Chair. Item number one is to accept the Resilient Lee Recovery and Resilience Plan, and I believe the task force chairman, Commissioner Ruhain, has some comments.
I appreciate it very much. First and foremost, thank you all, Commissioners, for the opportunity to serve as a chairman of Long-Term Recovery Task Force. It's truly an honor. I can't thank the people enough in really helping with our recovery. This recovery is about you, your participation, the endless hours that you gave, not only whether you were on the task force or the branches. It really helped us come together as a community. You're a part of the solution, and your public participation really made this a great plan. I'm happy to be part of it, and I'm really happy to chair a group that obviously spent an awful lot of time. Can't thank staff enough, and obviously our consultants. It really became a plan that really came together. When I compare this to the plan that was given to me from the people up north, I think this plan has so many different options to it and so many more things to it. Obviously, learn more as you go through it. It's really my honor to present this plan, and obviously, I would make the motion to accept this plan.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further questions for staff at this time?
No, Mr. Chairman, may I make some comments, though?
Yes, absolutely.
First of all, just want to send a hearty thank you to Commissioner Ruhain for your leadership on this. You know, in the wake of Hurricane Ian, the third costliest storm to ever hit the United States of America, we knew that in our community, we would be facing a historic rebuild. I mean, this was something that our community had never seen before, and we'd seen hurricanes before. And, you know, we knew that it was going to have to be the community, a full, total community effort, to put this plan together, and Commissioner, your leadership did that. You assembled a great team of just amazing individuals from all over the community, and they put together a really good plan. I'm looking forward to using that as our playbook to help go and advocate for some big dollars, to help our community fully get back on its feet. And I just want to thank every single member who took part in being on the task force for that, because, again, you know, this was, this was a team effort in Lee County. This was the probably most historic event in the history of Lee County, and we are coming back as a community because of the involvement of this group. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Yes, please.
Also, I'd like to congratulate Kevin and everybody who's participated in this. If you think about it, it's probably like 540 days since it struck. That's not a long time, but if you look at the work that's been done, the effort that's been made, the leadership that's been provided, I think we should be proud of ourselves as a community. Much has been done, much to do. But thanks, Kevin.
And I think I echo what the other Commissioner said. It seems like it's been a long time, but it really hasn't, and a lot's been done in a short period of time, in my opinion. So you just can't say enough about how we're recovering. I think we're doing a great job. And Commissioner Ruhain, as I've told you many times, I appreciate the effort that you've made to help us recoup the money from the federal government, from Tallahassee, and the effort and time you spend of your own time has been very important for Lee County. So thank you.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chair, and to Commissioner Hammond's point, now we have a lot of real hard work to do, because we need to go and go in every crevice possible and grab every dollar that's available to us. Listen, I'm proud of where we are at month 18. People from Bay County keep on telling me, it's five years, and maybe not where we are. But in the same token, we have a lot to do, and I know with this team, this group we got, we can accomplish many great things for Lee County. Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, at this time, would anyone in public like to make comment on item one? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment. We had a motion to approve from Commissioner Ruhain, and a second from Commissioner Hammond. Is that right?
That's correct.
Any objections? Okay, seeing no objections, item one moves four to zero. Mr. Harner, please introduce item number two.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item is to approve piggyback purchase of 10 Type 1 ambulances for public safety, and I'd like to ask Mr. Lavender to present the item.
Good morning. Jesse Lavender with Fleet Management. The item before you is a piggyback purchase off the Florida Sheriff's contract for 10 custom ambulances, two of which are part of the board's strategic priority to expand and enhance the public safety. The other eight are replacing aging and totaled units. The total purchase price is just under $2.6 million, and the savings is about 9.63%.
Okay. At this time, Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff?
I'm gladly moving the item, Mr. Chairman. I'll second.
Okay. All right, we have a motion to approve Commissioner Ruhain. We have a second from Commissioner Sandelli. We'll open up for public comment. Does anyone wish to speak on item number two? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Any further discussion, Commissioners? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve from Commissioner Ruhain, a second from Commissioner Hammond. Any objections? Seeing no objections, item number two moves unanimously, four to zero. Mr. Harner, please introduce item number three.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is to adopt the resolution to establish a Veterans Advisory Committee, and I'd like to ask Mr. Wynton to present the item.
Good morning, Commissioners. This advisory committee to the Board of County Commissioners would act as a liaison between the board and veterans organizations to advise the board on the coordination of services for Lee County veterans, including identifying any gaps in services, to make recommendations to the board on improving the availability of resources for veterans in Lee County, and help unify organizations in communication of issues before local, state, and federal legislative bodies that affect veterans, surviving spouses, and their family members. Would be a 10-member committee established by the board. Each board member would have two appointees, the requirements being that they served in the armed services and were honorably discharged.
At this time, we have any questions or any comments for staff?
No. Greatest honor I've ever had is to wear the uniform of a country, as many of you have. We had a committee in the past, members stepped forward and said, "Look, we need to resurrect this. There's a lot of pressure on the armed services today." And so, nobody's better to carry that flag than veterans that have gone before. So I'm honored to be a part of this, and I'll move the item.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the item from Commissioner Sandelli, and a second from Commissioner Hammond. Would anyone in public like to speak on item number three? Yes, sir. Come on up, please state your name.
My name is Steve Epkins. I've been the chair of this committee for about the last six months, and to our county commissioners, our county manager, our two assistant county managers that worked on this, and your legal team, we want to say on behalf of the 55,000 veterans, their family members, and surviving spouses, we thank you for the reestablishment of the Lee County Veterans Advisory Committee. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Okay, any other public comment, please? Please state your.
Tara Jenner, proud to wear my DD 214 shirt, and to thank you all for doing this. I know that in the past, we've had a Veteran Advisory Council that kind of went by the wayside, and I think a lot of that was, as we looked at historically, how that was set up, it did not include veterans as the bulk of the individuals. So reestablishing this with members of the armed services who are honorably discharged will ensure that we not only have the vested interested in making sure this goes forward, but also that we will have a focus on our veterans. Our goal here is to be a liaison between you all and the many phenomenal organizations that currently are serving our veterans, and hopefully, as a hub, we'll be able to assist in getting those resources out in a one-stop shop, and it'll make it a little bit easier for some people. And we just thank you so much for doing this. Have a great day.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Okay, I'll close public comment at this time. I had a motion for Commissioner Sandelli to approve, a second from Commissioner Hammond. Any further discussion? Oh, nope. Any further discussion? Okay. Did I call for public comment? Is that what you're looking at?
Right.
Any objections?
No.
Okay, no objections. Item number four moves four to zero. Mr. Harner, please introduce item number five.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item is to approve transportation tiers and additional funding for Lehigh resurfacing, and I'd like to ask Mr. Price to present the item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Pam Keys with Lee County Utilities. This morning, we're asking you to accept grant funding of $1.5 million for a septic conversion project. The funding is provided by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and the intent of the project is to reduce nutrients from wastewater effluent. The project area was chosen based on priorities outlined in our countywide wastewater management plan. The total project estimated cost is $6 million. Staff will continue to look for grant funding for the construction of the project, and this morning, we're excited to get started on this pilot program.
Any questions for staff or comments? Commissioner Hammond?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Ms. Keys, our Director Keys, could you talk to me about some of those grant funding opportunities y'all will be looking at?
We have. We've continued to look at, through DEP, they've got a couple of different pots of money that we have our eye on. Their suggestion was to get started on the design so it's more shovel-ready. We've also looked towards our legislative sessions to ask for appropriations, and we've been successful with that. There may be resiliency funds or...
This item is to approve transportation tiers and additional funding for Lehigh resurfacing, and I'd like to ask Mr. Price to present the item.
Morning, Commissioners. Rob Price with DOT. Agenda item number 4 is requesting concurrence from our tiers workshop from two weeks ago, on March 4th. We seek agreement with the project tiers 1, 2, and 3 as presented at the work session and attached to this item as backup. Additionally, we are requesting a $7.5 million budget transfer for countywide resurfacing that brings our annual resurfacing budget up to $17.5 million to address the increase in costs for paving over the last few years. One clarification we wanted to make was the agenda item indicates it's for Lehigh resurfacing, but the requested resurfacing budget is for countywide use, which will include Lehigh Acres. We're here for any questions.
Any questions or comments for staff at this time? I would like to make one. Being the Commissioner of District 5, over the years, I think people don't realize how much county has done on the repaving out of Lehigh, and it's great to see that that's going to continue forward. So, I just wanted to make sure that we got that out there, so thank you. At this time, I'm calling for public comment. Any public comment on Item Number 4? Seeing none, I will close for public comment. Do you have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion to approve from Commissioner Raines, a second from Commissioner Hammond. Any further discussion? Oh, nope. Any further discussion? Did I call for public comment? Is that what you're looking at? Any objections? Okay, no objections. Item Number 4 moves 4 to 0. Mr. Harner, please introduce Item Number 5.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item is to accept FDEP legislative appropriation grant funding, and I'd like to ask Ms. Keys to present the item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Pam Keys with Lee County Utilities. This morning, we're asking you to accept grant funding of $1.5 million for a septic conversion project. The funding is provided by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and the intent of the project is to reduce nutrients from wastewater effluent. The project area was chosen based on priorities outlined in our countywide wastewater management plan. The total project estimated cost is $6 million. Staff will continue to look for grant funding for the construction of the project, and this morning, we're excited to get started on this pilot program.
Any questions for staff or comments, Commissioner?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Ms. Keys, or Director Keys, could you talk to me about some of those grant funding opportunities y'all will be looking at?
We have. We've continued to look at, through DEP, they've got a couple of different pots of money that we have our eye on. Their suggestion was to get started on the design so it's more shovel-ready. We've also looked towards our legislative sessions to ask for appropriations, and we've been successful with that. There may be resiliency funds or other funding sources, but DEP for utility projects is pretty much our go-to.
Okay, thanks very much for that.
I often refer to these services as essential services. I continue to carry that flag. Thank you for the opportunity to get out ahead of us. It always takes too long and too much time, but we can't afford to get behind. So, thank you for the permission.
Commissioner Raines.
And I appreciate all you're doing. I know you're going to have to go for grants. Many times, the Department of Agriculture gets involved in septic. Would that be a potential avenue that we could explore?
Yes, we've had discussions with them, so I think we'll continue with those discussions. It depends kind of on where the projects are.
Okay, thank you.
All right, this time, I'll call for public comment. Would anyone like to comment on Item Number 5? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. Do I have a motion?
I'll move the item.
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion to approve from Commissioner Raines, a second from Commissioner Hammond. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Item Number 5 moves 5 to 0, or 4 to 0, excuse me. That concludes the administrative agenda. At this time, we will move to the public hearing agenda. There is one public hearing item. Mr. County Attorney, please introduce public hearing, Item Number 1.
Good morning, Commissioners. Rob Holborn with the County Attorney's Office. Public hearing Number 1 has been properly advertised. This public hearing is to approve a fare increase for Lee Tran's mobility on-demand service from $1.50 per trip to $3.00 per trip, beginning on June 3rd of 2024. Lee Tran currently provides a similar service, paratransit and transportation disadvantaged fares for $3.00 per trip. Approval of this fare increase would increase the mobility on-demand fare in line with the current paratransit and transportation disadvantaged fare. Staff is available for any questions you all may have.
Commissioner, we have any questions or comments at this time for staff? Okay, seeing none. I will call for public comment. Would anyone like to discuss Item Number 1? Okay, seeing none, I will close.
Move approval.
Okay. I'll close public comment. We have approval to move the item from Commissioner Hammond, a second from Commissioner Sandelli. Any further discussion?
Just a brief comment. You know, this was a new idea that we started and piloted here in Lee County a couple of years ago, starting in Benita Springs and then moving on to Lehigh Acres. And, you know, I want to congratulate Lee Tran and Mr. Cody and all the folks who work in Lee Tran who got this off the ground. It's great to see the success. It's great to see that it's an on-demand and in-demand service, pun intended there, and looking forward to seeing more success with this.
Any other comment?
I'd also like to thank the team when this was first proposed. Is this going to work? And I took the opportunity to go out to some of the communities where these stops were being made, and I can tell you the receptivity of making it convenient and more comfortable was very well received, so thank you to everybody.
I'll just echo the same comments. Can't thank you enough. Thank you very much.
Great job. I'll do the same. It's great to see us be able to provide services to the community, especially in my district, District 5, so we appreciate it. A little selfish there, wasn't it? Okay, so, at this time, would anyone like to make a motion?
I made the motion.
Commissioner Hammond, a second was Commissioner Sandelli. Any objections? Seeing no objections, Item Number 1 moves unanimously, 4 to 0. Okay, that concludes the public hearings today. We'll move on to walk-ons, walk-ons and carryovers. No walk-ons and no carryovers. So, we have Commissioner items next. Moving to Commissioner items, Commissioner Hammond, do you have any items to?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I have two that are basically announcements. Number 1, I've been asked by the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission to just make a notice of a public hearing. So, they've asked me to notify the public of a public hearing for the Fred C. Babcock Cecil M. Webb Wildlife Management Area Management Plan. The meeting's going to take place in Charlotte County, Florida, 7:00 PM, Wednesday, March 27th. That's this year, so 7:00 PM, Wednesday, March 27th. It'll be actually at Shandler Hall in Fort Myers. The address for Shandler Hall is 419 Florence Avenue in Fort Myers, Florida, 33905. So, they're going to take public comment regarding the considerations for the 10-year land management plan for the preserve out there, and they'd love to get feedback from the public on that. I know it's a great, great place that the public, you know, enjoys a lot, and so, go to that meeting on Wednesday, March 27th. The second opportunity that I wanted to just give you all an update on, so this past week, I had an opportunity to go meet with Lee Health and the Greater Community Interdenominational Ministerial Alliance at Mount Herman Church in Dunbar there. Pastor Glover and his team did an amazing job organizing this event. It was a symposium on Lee Health's transition from a public not-for-profit to a private not-for-profit hospital system. As you guys know and have been briefed, you know, if that happens, the Lee County Board of County Commissioners would have to make a funding agreement with Lee Health in order to allow them to continue to get their Medicaid payments and also the federal drawdown dollars that come with that. The community was really engaged at this symposium. They asked a lot of great questions. They're really concerned about making sure that if the transition does take place, that Lee Health remains a safety net health system and that they don't lose any care for, you know, the charity or the underinsured or underserved communities that they already currently have. In fact, we'd love to see that improved if they could. So, I would just encourage you, they said if the Board of Lee Health decides to forward this on to the Board of County Commissioners, which could take place sometime this summer, you know, we'll have a decision point at that point, and they would like to invite us back to have a symposium where we would answer questions about what covenants and protections we would like to see in that agreement to ensure that Lee Health does remain a safety net hospital. And so, just would encourage you, if you get that invitation later this year, to take it up because it was a well-done symposium in town hall. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sandelli? Commissioner Raines? I have one item. We need to consider the municipal appointments to the CDBGDR Planning and Infrastructure Evaluation Committee. I will need a motion and a second. Benita Springs, Michael Gibson, Jr. Cape Coral, John Bashaw.
Estero, William River.
Fort Myers, Lydia Black. Fort Myers Beach, Rebecca Link. Sanibel, Chancy Gross. And Lee County Manager, John Yarborough.
I will move the item, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I have a motion to move the item from Commissioner Hammond.
I'll second it.
And a second from Commissioner Raines. Okay, that motion, any?
Public comment.
Public comment. Any public comment on that item? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Okay, I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Hammond, a second from Commissioner Raines. Any objections? Any further discussion? No objections. Approve 4 to 0. That concludes Commissioner items. We will move to committee appointments. Moving to committee appointment, Commissioner Hammond, do you have any committee appointments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One reappointment this morning is Carolyn Kimbrel to the Alabama Grove Area Lighting Unit.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Hammond and a second from Commissioner Raines. Any objections? No objections. So, it's approved unanimously, 4 to 0. Commissioner Sandelli?
I have one reappointment, Henry Zubba to the Affordable Housing Committee, and my other one was Dana Bersky, which is on the CBDGR.
Okay. A motion to approve? Or a second?
I'll second that, absolutely.
Okay, we have a motion to approve from Commissioner Sandelli, a second from Commissioner Raines. Any objections? No objections. Item moves 4 to 0. Commissioner Raines, do you have any?
I do. I have three reappointments and obviously, one new appointment for this CBDGR. So, my three reappointments, Margaret Carlton, she's from the Boca Grande Historical Preservation Board. Charles Mayer, he's from the Cherry Blueberry Improvement Unit, and Masia Toke from the Cherry Blueberry Improvement Unit. Those are my reappointments. The appointment is Michael Allen to CBDGR.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Raines, a second from Commissioner Hammond. Any objections? No objections. Okay. I also have an appointment. I have two. I have a new appointment, Robert Bennett, to the Lehigh Acres Street Lighting Committee. I also have an appointment to the CDBGDR Evaluation Committee, Dalton Drake. I will need a motion and a second. So, move.
Second.
You have a motion from Commissioner Hammond, a second from Commissioner Raines. Any objections? No objections. Okay. And approves, so 4 to 0. That concludes the committee appointments. County Manager items, Mr. Harner, do you have any County Manager items?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I just have a real quick update. I would like to discuss the potential recycling facility that we discussed on March 5th at our last board meeting. Just to provide a quick update, the direction the board gave us was to have a meeting in Pelican Preserve. We want to clarify that we will hold a meeting in Pelican Preserve this Thursday. It will be held at Gateway Trinity Church. That is just based on the conversation that the board had to ensure that everyone had availability, that we had a big enough space for everyone. We will also follow the board's direction and hold one in Pelican Preserve. We're working with that community right now on a date and a time. So, this Thursday will be for everyone. It'll be at the Trinity Community Church from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, and then we'll be working on a date shortly after that for the community.
That it?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we will then move to County Attorney items. Mr. Welch, do you have any County Attorney items?
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay. All right, then we will move to public presentations of matters by citizens. I do have two cards. And first up will be Darlene Riley. Just so you know, you got three minutes.
I've got two.
Oh, two minutes? Okay, go ahead.
I counted it.
All right, go ahead. There you go.
Okay, good morning. I am here this morning to request that the noise ordinance in Lee County be amended to include the level of sound called hertz or bass. The way the current ordinance is written, the measurement for sound in Lee County is measured by a decibel meter, which only reads decibels and not hertz. Decibel meters are not capable of measuring the level of noise called hertz. Hertz is what you hear when the car next to you has the bass up so loud that the pounding rattles the windows in your car, and you feel it physically. I reside in a residential neighborhood in Lehigh Acres and have had the sheriff's office come out, excuse me, I'm a little nervous, at least 50 times due to a neighbor who plays loud music. After spending $14,000 on new windows to block out the noise and his dropping the level of decibels to the reasonable recommended level, at this point, I do not hear the music anymore. All I hear is the incessant pounding that his woofer puts out. I'm not the only one in Lee County that is suffering from this sort of intrusion, as I have spoken to others that have neighbors who behave in the same manner. They get away with it while we go out of our minds from the constant intrusion of pounding going on in our homes. When the sheriff's office is contacted, there is nothing they can do, and mostly, they must drive away without any action being taken because they have no way to enforce a law that does not exist. Their inability to measure that level of noise, sound, is also frustrating to them as they hear the noise but cannot do anything about it. Because of the type of noise it is, it penetrates and sometimes intensifies when going through cement block houses, and no level of insulation resolves the problem. This means that at the source, it may not be that loud, but as it travels, the sound increases. I've spent years calling the sheriff's office, and they mostly all come out and are sympathetic of how intrusive the noise is, but are unable to write a ticket, and I am not allowed to file a complaint because of the lack of measurement of this particular level of noise. I would respectfully submit that noise ordinance Number 22-10 be amended to include the measurement of bass and that the Lee County Sheriff's Office begin to have the ability to measure this intrusive level of noise with the proper equipment.
Okay, thank you. Is that something staff could meet with her afterwards to discuss?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we can.
Thank you. All right, next up will be Williams Schottmiller.
Willie Joe Schottmiller for the record. As always, I would like to see affordable housing, but my quest is to, right now, have some form of emergency housing where we could set up for people to go. There's a new law that people cannot be sleeping outside, so the need is more urgent right now. I'd like to thank Mr. Ballard for his concern in the North Fort Myers area. I'm looking at a piece of property there that is near the community center that I would like to lock in money coming in from rent to help with Article 11, Lee County surplus property on Second Street. I wish I knew about it. That would have been a good place to build something, you know, like Lois Healy or that. And the proceeds, I understand, are going to the affordable housing, and I think that's a good thing. The price was like around 10 grand. So, we need housing, yes, affordable, but we also need the emergency right now. And I thank you for your time. I got to go help somebody because Fernando is sick, and I need to get to the factory. So, God bless.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner?
No, 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 just when he's done, no. I just have one other item.
Okay. Does anyone else wish to speak? Any public matter that did not provide a card? Please come on up. Please state your name. Yeah, it's fine. You just talk, we can hear you.
My name is Marcus Contas. I live in Estero, 20291 Carter Road, out by the Country Store. And as a concerned citizen, looking at the approval of Kingston Development, we still have one-lane road in each direction, and this issue of concurrence where infrastructure was in line and kept pace with development. We're not against development, but we need concurrence. We can't have 9,400 more car trips per day on one-lane road in each direction that is already gridlocked during rush hour. So, really wish that you all could look at this a lot more closely and come back to that issue of concurrence, that item, that mandate, which would make a whole lot more sense because trying to figure out how to put 9,400 more car trips each day out there, and that's going to grow. We all know that's going to grow with Amazon and everybody else and the other developments that'll come in after that, and really, really need the commissioners to have that lined up along with all the other infrastructure, like water and everything else that's going on out there. But just imagine 9,400 more car trips per day on a single lane in each direction road. I moved here when that was dirt, and we really need to catch up with that. We're going to approve projects like Kingston.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your comments. Would anyone else like to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, Commissioner Raines?
Sure, just one other thing, and it's just a conversation that we need to have while we're up here as opposed to any other time. First and foremost, thanks, Mr. Chairman, for actually moving forward, you know, with our block grant. I think it's really important. I'd love to have either an agenda item, a workshop. Now that we've appointed everybody, how do we work through the logistics of this? How does the committee work? And how do we continue to be updated? Because we actually submitted a plan for an unmet need of over $9 billion. We received one. If there's anyone that really took advantage and actually really did a great job, was from Hurricane Sandy, they actually, you know, submitted 5 and received 13. So, there's an opportunity to do that. We have an unmet need that we've submitted that's almost 10 times what we received. And I don't want to seem unappreciative, but I'd love to understand how this is working, how we continue to upgrade, because at the end of the day, we're going to be the individuals that are going to have to go to Washington and continue to fight for that unmet need that they're not going to fulfill. And I'd just like to understand the mechanics a little bit more.